Only applies to about half of our electric bill, the supply side. The delivery side is always from ever source regardless of our supplier. Current contract we put in place in July 2018 and expires at the end of December. So it's two and a half year period. Colonial Power is a broker. Our supplier is public power. And we have two offerings currently. Our default offering, which means if you don't opt out of this, you get into a product that is the non mandatory or voluntary content is 100% national wind racks. And but people do have the option to opt down to a product that just meets mandatory requirements for renewable content. Just as an overview here, about six, about 70% should say of Carlisle's electricity use is actually going through this contract. This is an approximation based on data for 2018 and I had to approximate it a bit because we didn't start our CCA contract until mid-year 2018. But I think it's pretty close. So the 30% that is not going through the CCA is some combination of ever source basic service. People who, in which case people might have opted out of the CCA or they already were under separate contract when the CCA started, in which case they weren't even invited to join it. Of course, they were. It was available to them, but they didn't specifically get a notice to sign up for the CCA. What we don't know exactly is how many of these people in that 30% or how many customers in that 30% opted out right at the start of the program versus those that were already on a separate contract.
And that 30% is that also includes the municipal facilities?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Whether you look at it by number of meters or total electricity consumption. You know, most, most people stayed with the optional, excuse me, with the default product in the national wind about 95%. Few people opted to the lower cost of 2%. And it appears that virtually all the commercial customers, which make about 4%, stayed with the default product. So let's take a quick look. Next couple of slides, we'll see how we did from a financial perspective. And what the blue bars are showing are the delivery rates that we would have paid had we been on ever source basic service. And the green horizontal bar is our contract price for the default offering. And as you can see, overall, we did better than ever source. But there's definitely time periods where ever source beat us and especially our current time period, the current six month period we're in now. By the way, these I'm using calendar years here throughout, so the current half of 2020 ever source rates actually dropped pretty dramatically below 10 cents a kilowatt hour. And this is how it looks if you translate it into overall costs of electricity. And this actually includes those who are on the lower cost option. And these numbers are in thousands of dollars. So the blue line at the end basically says over the two and a half year period. And I'm obviously I'm projecting here, but I think the, I think the projections are pretty good. We know, we know the prices. The only thing that's projected is our energy consumption through the balance of the well, actually from June on is projected. But I think these numbers will turn out pretty close and we saved, we Carlisle saved about $263,000 by going through this community choice aggregation, which is about 5% of what the ever source rates would have been, we saved about 5% on our delivery charges. And that's not a trivial amount of money. I think we should be proud of ourselves. So that's kind of an overview of the current contract. And you know, without getting into a lot of the details right now, unless you have questions. We're on a real fast track. I mean, the bottom line is we've got, we got started very late in the process and most of you know, trying to get ready for the next contract. We are going with Colonial Powers, a broker. We've, Tim and Glenn and I've had discussions with Colonial Power and we asked them for a specific timeline. And they strongly recommended that we try to get out for bid before some of their, well, some big customers go out. Boston, for example, is going to go out soon and ever source goes out for bid as well. So our broker thinks we'll probably get more attention from the bidders and probably a little bit better price if we try to get out quickly, which really means making decisions tonight. So that tomorrow or even the latest, the next day, we can get the feedback to Colonial Power that they need to get their bid package together, submit it, get pricing by the 13th of October. 13th of October will be another crazy day. The way these markets work is insane. By our usual decision-making timelines, but these bids come in and they have a, they're active for only a few hours. We need to act on them right away. So bits come in in the morning. We'll have a Zoom session with our broker. And by 3:30, Tim Goddard will be signing a contract, assuming you give us the go ahead today. I won't go through the other details on this slide right now, but for now, we won't be finished at that point. We'll still have a lot to do in the balance of the year to notify folks and get the word out that new contracts coming up and let them know what the options are. So just a little bit of background here on requirements that Massachusetts has in place for electric power supply. And so if you're in Massachusetts, it doesn't matter who your supplier is. You have to meet some minimum requirements and those requirements ratchet up over time. I've just shown recent history in the next year here. Some of the requirements going out past 2021 are not even set yet. But the lowest darkest green bar here represents the Massachusetts class one products and that is renewable installations that have gone in in 1998 or later. And they're considered separately because the impact of purchasing these wrecks for these power, for this power is arguably a little bit higher if you invest in the newer facilities. The older facilities are there, they're going to operate anyway. Most of the investments been made, they have no fuel costs, so they're going to continue on. So class two represents the next chunk. That includes not only some renewable facilities, but also basically burning trash to generate electricity. So about half of that amount is from trash burning. And then there's a category called the alternative portfolio standard, which is a mix of things, probably mostly combined heat and power. As some people might argue is not really renewable, but their technologies in Massachusetts has decided to promote. And so if you look at 2020, about 28% of the content is prescribed. And it doesn't matter where we get our power from, we've got to meet that, those requirements. The other 72% is what's up for grabs. And again, that number changes going forward. Just a quick highlight, the note here in red about emitting sources. I just want to point out of the in 2020 of the 28% that's from required sources. Only about 20% of that or so is really from what I would call non-emitting sources. And by that, I mean sources that do not emit carbon directly. And obviously biomass, burning trash, those sorts of things are are putting some emissions out. Apologies, I know this chart is, chart is difficult to read, but that's somewhat intentional. I'm trying to sanitize confidential information. This represents some of the indicative pricing that our brokers sent us in late August. And the only thing I want to say really about this is to show what some of the trends are here. Not too worried about the exact numbers. So if you look across the bottom of the scale, this is showing increasing terms for contracts. From 12 months to 36 months, you'll notice that there's with, except for an anomaly with the 18 month term, I'm not really sure why that's there, but generally speaking, the longer the term of the contract, the lower the price. But it's not huge differences, but they're, they're definitely there. The other thing that's probably obvious is that you, as one increases the renewable content and voluntary renewable content, the price goes up. And the purple bar is sort of the, you know, the maximum green. That's where you're going with 100% Massachusetts class one wrecks. 100% of the voluntary component is class one wrecks. And so I didn't include all the data we had. So there's a big jump between 5% and, and 100%. Now, this is a purely illustrative example to give folks an idea of the order of magnitude of numbers in terms of the types of products we might consider for our next contract. I think the numbers are reasonably close, but they are numbers that I've come up with based on reviewing the indicative pricing and other sources. So please don't, don't quote these numbers as real. But if you look at the average home in Carlisle, we use about 12,000 kilowatt hours a year in the average home. And based on 11 cents for the delivery charge, which is illustrative, but then adding in the other charges that we have to pay the supply charges, excuse me, the delivery charges and the meter charges. Get to the total, it's about a $2,600 a year bill. Now, if the estimated price increment for going to a product that has the balance, the voluntary portion, national wind, you're adding about a dollar a month, your electric bill. If we then go and add in addition to that, 5% additional class one wrecks, you're up to 340 a month. If you go all the way to 100% of the voluntary content being class one, you get about 50 bucks a month adder. So those are ballpark, what we're talking about. I'd like to jump ahead in the deck just a little bit to show a couple of new slides that are not in your deck. And I want to thank, thank Brian for providing some, a nice summary of Massachusetts data from other communities that I've put into a couple of charts. And just to give you a sense for how, how the prices among various communities vary. So if look down here quickly. This chart is representing about 66 communities, including some very substantial buying groups where these are multiple communities grouped together and went out for bid. And here we're looking just at pricing for a product that just meets state requirements for renewable content. These charts are apples and oranges because these contracts are for different terms. These contracts were initiated at different points in time. And so it's hard to say that a community at the left end of this chart was a lot smarter than a community at the right end of the chart. That may be true, but it's not necessarily true. I think one key observation here, which, which your broker told us was true, but you don't see a really good correlation between price and population of the community. So I would have intuitively thought that the larger communities or buying groups would get much better pricing. But apparently there are enough smaller suppliers out there and everyone has to compete with the same ever source. And so the market doesn't seem to care that much about the size of the community. I wouldn't read too much into the fact that Carlisle is towards the right of this. Again, this is kind of an apples and oranges comparison. And another thing here that's important is that of this sample of communities, they're all beating the 30 month average for ever source. And so it sort of suggests that the CCA is not a big, there's not a big downside and there's substantial upside in terms of price. I'll just show one more chart quickly. I have a series of these we can go back to if there's questions that show higher renewable contents, but this chart is showing our similar chart showing a product that is our default product where the voluntary content is 100% national wind. And here again, you see a similar trend. And based on this sample, no community was paying more than ever source, even with the national wind product. And again, I have, I have a couple of charts, so just showing very briefly and then flip back. We can go back to them if there's questions. This is with 5% renewable content. Still, people are tending to beat the historical average for ever source. This chart is 5% plus the balance being national wind, similar trend. 10% renewable, similar trend. And you get up to 20% class one, you start to see some communities paying more. And then when you go to the balance being 100% class one, almost everybody is paying more. But some, some communities got a really good deal if they were in the market at the right time. You know, in Cambridge or two, I'll mention. I know that's a lot of information, but let me flip back. So now we get to what are some of the decisions and things we need to talk about tonight and do in the short term? This table summarizes the product options that we have on our current contract and compares them to the options that Glenn and I are recommending. And again, these are Glenn and my recommendations and not necessarily, you know, those, there are people on the energy task force who would vote for something different. We think that it's a good idea to keep a low cost option as we have now to let people opt down to something that's just meets requirements. So that would be unchanged. We're also, we're also suggesting at the other end of the bottom of this table that we consider adding a third product option for those who really want to go to max green and get 100% local class one renewables and make that available as an option to opt up to. The part that we'll probably need to talk the most about is what do we want for our default offering? I.e. the product you get if you don't choose to up, up or down. And right now, as I mentioned, we have a product that the voluntary content is 100% national wind. There's a lot of debate and controversy around the environmental impact of national wind wrecks. And you'll find people in the meeting today who are convinced that they do not have benefit. I've talked to Glenn and I spent a lot of time along with other volunteers from other communities and over the past several months to try to understand a little bit better the environmental impact of these various sources of wrecks and the bottom line is it's very tough to tell in my opinion. And if you look at it from a wreck by wreck basis, certainly the class one wrecks beat national wind, no question about it. If you look at it a, on a dollar per dollar basis, where the national wind wrecks are much, much cheaper, they're about class one wrecks are roughly 40 or 50 times the cost of national wind wrecks. If you look at it a per dollar spent basis, I don't think the definitive analysis has been done to tell us what wreck is best. And again, that we're not going to have a consensus on that perspective. That's my perspective based on what I've seen. It's a counter, it's a counterfactual analysis. And unfortunately, I've not seen a definitive analysis written down. I've only seen claims by experts on both sides. So that's sort of the long-winded story behind this. And but Glenn and I do think that this would be a good time for Carlisle to consider adding some class one wrecks to our default product. And the question is really how much? We, whatever we decide on, based on price or other criteria, we would recommend that the voluntary balance be national wind wrecks. You know, despite the controversy about the value of those wrecks. And we've, we've learned from our broker that we can go out for bid by telling the suppliers the price point that we want to hit. And they'll tell us how much class one content they can give us for that price point. So we could decide what, what price we're willing to pay. And they'll come back and we could go with the bidder who offers the highest last one content for that price. Now, if we decide to do that, then what price point do we pick? Glenn and I talked about this and you know, it's a judgment call. The 11.6 cents a kilowatt hour is the 30 month historical average of ever source. There's no guarantee that that price will be ever sources price going forward and almost certainly will not be ever sources price going forward. It may be higher and maybe lower. We don't know. But at least if we go for a product that's 11.6 cents, we would be saying we're willing to pay roughly up to ever source basic service rates, but get the most renewable content we can afford for that price. I think I should pause there because I just hit you with a lot of information. Give you a second to react to it.
Well, I think that was pretty clear. Thank you, Bob. You've done a great job explaining that to something that's quite complicated. Comments from the board?
This is Barney, just a question, just clarification, I think I understand, but on the chart we're looking at right now, for the middle option, the 100% renewable default, you're suggesting a change from what we had and the change would be some percentage of the class one wrecks. That before it was all national wind wrecks. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have another question. Was any consideration given to the low cost optional being 100% national wind rather than what I call brown energy? At least it's all, I mean, whatever you might think about the value of the wrecks is at least it's all renewable energy.
Well, it's an excellent question. We didn't specifically consider that. And maybe we were presumptuous that, that you would want to have the lowest cost product available to people. But there's certainly a very solid, in my opinion, a very solid argument for doing that. So certainly that would be very easy for us to do if, if you feel that's appropriate.
We are not limited to three choices is what I understood from your, when I read through the presentation, we could have four choices.
Certainly could. And some, some communities do have four choices. It's a, the downside is, as far as I know, is whether it confuses people to have too many choices, but as far as I know, there's no other downside other than the potential for people, you know, having confusion. That's really, that would really just be up to us to do a good communication job over the next few months to make sure people understand what these products are, what they are not. And, and be very honest about the fact that there's a lot of unknowns and there's a lot of differences, different opinions among the experts out there about, you know, about the, the value of some of these products.
This is Brian Moda said, if I could comment. That then there are very few, I, I put together a spreadsheet which Bob referred to, which basically I analyzed the programs for all 166 cities and towns in Massachusetts that have CAA programs. And out of 104, about 148 of those are not, haven't suspended their programs. Or aren't it still, there are a few that are still in development like Boston has not yet come out with their started their program. But of the 148, probably five or six have four options. It's very unusual. It's not, it's very tip, it's very, it's probably more than half of them only have the default option. But two options is pretty common and three options isn't so uncommon. But four is very unusual. I think people just, that's sort of over the top, maybe.
Kate, I think while I'm ecologically very much in support of what you're suggesting, I think get given the probability that we have people in town who in fact are having financial difficulties. A true low cost option that is the lowest cost possible should be offered to them. Even if it's even in, especially because there's a relatively small number of people historically who have chosen that option. It at least indicates that we're recognizing that there are people here who have financial limitations and are trying to do something for them.
Okay, Ken?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, Bob Zag, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very helpful. The, what Brian was talking about, I think is really important, communication. So just walk us through a person, Carlisle resident gets, I mean, I know personally, I get a lot of offers in the mail about all these different, switch this, switch that. It's very confusing. So do all Carlisle residents have to go with one of these three? Because we get all these offers from third parties, you know, telling us we can switch. Are they all talking about the same switch?
No. Yes, and you're absolutely right. It is a big point of confusion and something we, I think we need to be very aware of and try to do our best to communicate. I, based on anecdotal information, I think that when we rolled this program out in July 2018 and we, we had confused people as well. So first of all, nothing is mandatory other than you can't buy electricity that doesn't at least meet the minimum state requirements for renewable content. But the choice of supplier is up to the individual, whether there's a CCA in place or not. Now, what's unique about the CCA? And Massachusetts is one of about a dozen states that allows this is that a municipality can negotiate on behalf of its citizens and businesses to procure an electricity supply. And what's different about it is once a community decides to go down this route and gets all the approvals and gets the pricing in place and gets the contract in place, anyone who is already getting their service from ever source through ever source basic service and is not already on, on their own contract is automatically switched into the CCA program. And they're initially put, what if they don't make a decision, they're initially put into whatever the default offering is. So if the, if the community offers three products, there is one that's a default. Now everyone will get a mailing, everyone who's on either, in our case, everyone's who's on every source basic service now, or anyone who's on our current CCA program will get a notice that says, this is what's happening. If you don't want to go on the CCA, you can opt out. Okay. And, but they do have to opt out. And some people, if they throw that mailing in the trash, they don't even know they had an opportunity. And, and those who decide to stay in, if they want one of the optional products, they have to select that and tell tell the supplier that they want the optional product. And experience shows that, as you saw the numbers for our program, very few people do opt down or opt up as the case may be. And I think the subtlety here is that in theory, everyone has a choice. But in practice, a lot of people are busy and they're not paying a lot of attention to what's going on and they may not even know. I'm sure that there's people in Carlisle today who have no idea that they're buying power from public power through a CCA contract. They have no idea. They just pay their bill. It still comes from ever source. And so that's the, that's the reason why.
Let me circle back because again, I want to get to the communication plan. So so a person, you open your ever source bill, you see the transmission charge and the supply charge and blah, blah, blah. If you've done nothing, you're, you're automatically getting what everybody, you're getting the default option of the CCA, right? You may not know it, but that's what you get. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. If you got a flyer in the mail from some other company that says, you know, Massachusetts residents have a choice and you should do this and you should do that, and you do whatever they tell you, then you have effectively opted out and opted for whatever you choose in that particular offer.
Yes, you can do that. You could also opt to go to the ever source basic service.
Right. So some people have, I guess, take it, I mean, I get them all the time. I'd say, you know, a couple of times a month, I get a flyer from somebody that says I should switch. So if somebody does whatever it says to do on those, those people may have opted out. They're under some contract with somebody else.
And now to be clear, not everyone gets noticed. And I, I don't think, I don't think our broker has the option, and I could be incorrect about this, I'm pretty sure a broker does not have the option to mail, send a, a notice, people who are already on another contract. If they've already separately contracted for their power, they don't even get a notice to tell them that the CCA exists, but they still have the option to join it as long as, as long as they don't default on their current contract.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's, that's a different question. I'm, and I'm looking, I think I just got one is, let me get this out here. Let me get this. I think this is right. Homeworks Energy, maybe that's an audit. That's something else. All right. So anyway, I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to, so if you're saying, Bob, that a broker, if we go forward with this plan, can we communicate? What can we communicate to get above the noise of these other offers to, you know, make it clear to people that this is really, I mean, I hesitate my word choice. This is the legitimate, you know, offer.
Yes, no, it's a, it's an important question. Recommendation that Glenn and I have is and I, based on discussions with Colonial Power, we think this is doable. That the mailing come from Carlisle. Now, apparently the DPU has a lot to say about the content of these notices. Because they are, to your point, very concerned about making sure they're not deceptive. So Colonial Power would have to work with us closely to make sure that we are within regulation. Now, in terms of who pays for these mailings, the honest truth is, if we want Colonial Power or the supplier to, I actually think the supplier sends out the mailing, I'm not sure. In any case, we pay for the mailing either way. We either, it goes into the bid that the supplier has to pay for the mailing. So that, you know, our residents ultimately pay for it and, and the charges and the quotes we get. Or Carlisle could presumably send out this mailing. We'll have to get a little bit more clarity on those details. And I think had, has Colonial Power been able to join the media?
They're, they're down there.
Yep.
Denise and Mark are both there.
Oh, good. So Mark, it might be better if you, Mark or Denise, it might be better if you could speak to the questions that David has about what the requirements are regarding this mailer and how it gets paid for. But I guess what I'm saying is that Glenn and I are suggesting that the town send the mailer so that it's clear it's coming from Carlisle.
Let me just, before Colonial joint says, I think that's a great idea because if it comes from Carlisle Town, it will have much more credibility than, you know, some third party. I'm, I wasn't, and I, I wasn't pursuing the who pays for it option. You know, I, I think it's a good, it's a, it's a public good that we're performing. It's to the benefit of the community. So you know, if it's Carlisle that does it, I'm fine with that. I'm not looking for that. I'm interested in Colonial's answer, but as long as we are what's the word, you know, compliance wise, if we are okay as Carlisle Town backing a particular suggestion or recommending a particular suggestion, I think that's a good thing.
I, I want to point out that this is not the first time we're doing this. We've done this. We did this, what was it, twenty-four months ago? Anyway, you, you weren't on the board, but we've already done that. We've already sent out these notices. We already made these decisions, well, analogous decisions for the town and notified the town. So this is not like we're reinventing the wheel here. We, we have done this. We noticed everybody. And as I recall, Mark will, when you do join us, I hope you're unmuted. Yeah, he'll indicate how we did it before. As I recall, Colonial did send those notices out for us.
Mark, would you like to say anything here? You're muted. Now, now we do.
I don't hear. Nope, don't hear him.
This is Denise. Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Great. So yeah, so as was said initially, when the program launched in, in July of two thousand and eighteen, what's called an initial opt out mailing went out to everyone who was on ever source basic service at that time. That mailing is kind of form and content is kind of dictated by the Mass Department of Public Utilities. So that main envelope, the number ten envelope that everyone gets in the mail in the top left corner, it says official town business. It has the Carlisle town seal, says town of Carlisle. And then it would say care of, in this case, the supplier is public power, care of public power, and it has public powers return address in the top left corner. It also says, do not discard important notice about your electricity rates. So that's kind of, kind of dictated by the DPU. And that's how that notice went out initially to every basic service customer. Since then, what happens is periodically we do do what we call a basic service suite mailing or a refresh mailing. So what you do is you pull the basic service list from ever source and you periodically mail to those folks who are on basic service. And that could be, A, they, they've moved to town, they're new in town. Or it could be folks that recently rolled off a, a third party contract or a competitive supply contract and they're back on basic service. So they get mailed basically the initial packet, which has the letter with the rates and an opt out card and a postage paid return envelope. And it's kind of the exact same mailing that went out initially and that happens periodically. So to just confirm what everyone's saying, it does, it does come from the town of Carlisle. It, it, you know, it doesn't just say the supplier's name in the top left.
But I, if I could just jump in, I, you know, I took another look at what was sent out. And yes, it does say Carlisle and it does have the town seal. Frankly, I would look at it and then realize I, I, if I didn't know what it was, and of course I did, I would, I might mistake it for some, something else. If it comes in an envelope that I recognize from the town of Carlisle, I think it would catch people. If that's something we can do.
And this could probably be supplemented with, you know, a mosquito explanatory article as well. Anybody else?
Um, I guess, are we going to have a discussion about the three options and which ones we really want to recommend and?
I think that's very appropriate. Yep.
Yeah, I guess.
Let me just show one more slide here. It's probably not the biggest part of the decision, but the other decision we ultimately need to make, not before we go out for bid, but before the thirteenth would be by the thirteenth would be the term of contract we like. And I just wanted to, you know, as we discussed earlier, the longer the term generally, the lower the price. But there's some things in play in Carlisle that you're well aware of. We're going through a master plan process based on latest projections that'll be finished. We'll at least have a, what we call an actionable mask, a master plan in September of next year. With the final by the, by December of next year. We might want to consider a little bit shorter term contract, even though there might be a little bit of a price hit. So that we're prepared to take action for the, our third contract based on what our master plan is suggesting the community wants to do relative to the environmental side of this whole equation and whether we want to start maybe perhaps establish some environmental goals and policies and move even further in the direction of green energy. So that would be the, that's really the trade off on the, on the term.
All right. Let's, let's start with the, with the three options and we can talk about term. I think they're, they're relatively independent.
I guess I'd like to hear more about the disagreement or the discussion or the, the issues around the difference between class one Rex and the mass class one Rex and the national wind.
I'd like to, I'd like to give Glenn an opportunity if he chooses to weigh in first and then perhaps some of the members of the energy task force would like to weigh in as well.
Glenn?
Bob, I'm just unmuting and turning my video on. You know, as, as Bob noted, there are, there are a variety of opinions. Can people hear me? Let me just?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Cause I can, I, good, because I thought I also put my video on, but I'm not seeing myself. So e- even among people who do deal with this on a fairly regular basis, there are a variety of opinions as to the, the true value of national wind wrecks in terms of the concept of additionality. That is, as we support national wind wrecks, when wrecks are we actually resulting in an increase in the supply of renewable energy through our support of those wind wrecks. And, and I've, and I've heard from people who deal with this on a daily ongoing basis that the answer is largely no. However, however, class one Massachusetts class one Rex, the, the opinions that there are additionality that we're actually going to see an increase in the amount of renewables, particularly local renewables. I think Bob can correct me if I'm wrong here. Massachusetts class one wrecks don't have to reside in Massachusetts, though many of them do. You know, I, I think there's a strong argument for us to focus on a default offer that is higher than the minimum percentage for the class one Rex. You know, you know, I'll, you know, other members of the task force and we'll note, I'm not a task force member. But other members of the task force, you know, may want to speak up as to their perceptions of the value of a higher percentage for class one Rex.
This is Brian. I am of the opinion that the national wind wrecks provide no additionality at all. The Green Energy Consumer Alliance considers national wind wrecks to be a brown option. So what we currently have is a brown option. If we add mass class one Rex and make that our default, then it wouldn't be a brown option anymore. But what would the national wind wrecks add? There is debate. The debate ranges between people who think that it adds nothing or is in fact counterproductive to have a national wind wrecks in the operating, to those who think it makes a slight difference. When you consider the price of the national wind wrecks, which is in Bob's presentation, it was called out as one to two, one tenth to two tenths of a cent per kilowatt. But in the, in the data that we looked at for the other towns, they get the national wind wrecks for less than that. So what we're adding to the monthly bill to get a national, national wind wrecks adds up to probably about twelve dollars a year. For twelve dollars, we can buy, people can buy themselves a T-shirt that's got some and, and signal their virtue as environmentally conscious people by, by wearing a green T-shirt probably would have more impact than being required to buy national wind wrecks as part of their renewable option. So I, another consideration against the national wind wrecks is it puts us at a hundred percent in theory. How do we do better? We have, if we're, if our, if our master plan says, states that we should commit ourselves to increasing our use of renewable energy. And we're already at one hundred percent renewable energy on paper with national wind wrecks, you can't go any higher than a hundred percent. What are we going to do? Go to two hundred percent? So my opinion is that national wind wrecks should play no part in our, in any of our options. It's a waste of money. It's actually counterproductive.
Brian, this goes back to a conversation I think we had at the last meeting you guys presented. Just bring me back into this. When you opt for the hundred percent renewable national wind wreck, it means that somebody somewhere else is using wind. And, and, and the, the delta demand created or the reduction is filled by something. Can you remind me, maybe Bob or Brian, how that actually works in being brown?
It's brown because it doesn't, it doesn't provide any incentive. Basically what it boils down to is the national wind wrecks and not only national wind wrecks, but they're the poster child for this. They're so cheap that they provide no incentive. This is the argument anyway, provides no incentive for anyone, for people, for a new renewable energy project. It, it, it doesn't provide enough revenue for it to make any difference in the.
No, but I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand, Brian, mechanically, you know, there's a grid and there's energy sources all over the country and it's not necessarily economical to move kilowatt hour of wind generated in Texas up to New England. So
You don't have to, David. And this is it actually, the geographical location of the buyer of a rack makes no difference.
Okay.
And it's hard to get one's head around that, but these rec purchases are unbundled. In other words, they're completely independent of the sale of the actual electricity, the consumption, the actual electricity. So this is literally like buying a carbon offset for air travel.
But does it?
But it isn't really because carbon offsets are carbon offsets. The wind wrecks exist mainly so that in the, so that when, so that power producers who have a portfolio standard to meet and are unable to meet it can purchase Rex. There's an oversupply of Rex for that purpose and people buy them in, people then sell them in what's called a voluntary market to consumers and producers who want to engage in virtue signaling. And the price of them is very small, very, very low, like a 30th, as much as a 50th.
Price of. Ryan, is it, is it so low because there's really a very small comp? I mean, if the, if the, if the national appetite for energy is, I don't know, a trillion kilowatt hours or something. If there's more renewables, does more renewable energy get actually produced?
No, that's the argument of additional, that there is no additionality. It's, it's basically, there's an, in certain markets, there's an oversupply of Rex because the, the portfolio standard is low and the producers are already producing a lot of renewable.
Right. So hence your point, they'll pay very little premium. It's not worth paying a premium because there's so much of it. But i- if, if, if everybody in the country were to switch to this 100% renewable default, wouldn't it force every, all the producers to buy up Rex? National, you know, wind or whatever. I mean, wouldn't it then force that market to go to renewables?
But the, uh, not, probably not because the regulators, the regulator, the mass class one Rex are the Rex that power producers in Massachusetts have to buy in order to satisfy the portfolio standard implied, imposed by the DPU. So when consumers purchase those Rex, they're reducing the supply and increasing the price. But when you buy a national wind wreck, there's already, there's already an oversupply of them in Texas. So you're not doing anything.
Right now, but I mean, but I'm saying.
Well, we have to make our decisions right now.
No, I understand that, but I just want to, I also want to understand the edges of the box, right? If every town in the country had this discussion right now and they all opted for the middle bar, would it not force the country to move to 100% renewable?
David, if I could weigh in on that. That's exactly a question that Glenn and I and a group of others asked ourselves. I did a little analysis and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I, the fact of the matter is that the nation is not on track to get to a carbon neutral electricity supply by 2050. But if we were, if we were on track in terms of the rate at which we were putting in new renewable assets to get to where we need to be, to be, I shouldn't say just green electricity, but green, or you know, zero carbon emissions across the board, which not only requires more renewal, more renewable as a percentage, but also requires a lot more electricity. And if communities did not distinguish or were basically purchased, they didn't have, show a preference of one rack over another. They'd absolutely start buying the cheap national wind wrecks and they would certainly in no time flat strip all the excess supply away and create a demand. And you'd see wind turbines going up in Texas and Oklahoma faster than you can believe. And as soon as that area got saturated, they go to the next cheapest place and they'd start building more. And so one of the arguments, if you look at that kind of a view, and not everyone argues that you should, but if you do take that kind of a view. Yeah. Continuing to invest in whatever renewable resources you can would have a big impact. You might even argue that it makes sense to start where wind is the cheapest or renewables are the cheapest. And one of the arguments against class one raxes were investing in renewables in the most expensive area to do, to produce renewable energy as opposed to starting where it's cheap. Again, I'm not taking a position. I'm just trying to present.
No, that's great. I mean, I never, you know, I don't want to pick an argument with anybody who used counterfactual in a sentence earlier. So. That was pretty good. Yeah. So I guess to try to distill what I'm hearing from both Brian and, and Bob is Bob is saying, i- if you ascribe to the theory that any decision incrementally across the country has a ripple effect, then even if we choose the middle one, we're on the, you know, good side of the argument to eventually move toward higher percentage of renewables. Acknowledging that, you know, we're not a lot of communities are doing that. If you take the Brian view, it's like you're wearing the shirt that says I'm green, but you're not really doing anything that's green because incrementally or at the margin of today, you're not really, you know, forcing the market. And then, so I have a following question, Brian, which is if you choose the local one, admittedly the high cost option, you know, both from a production and a consumer standpoint, we have more local control. Is that why that's better? Why is that better?
Because we're buying the same Rex that producers have to buy in order to satisfy the portfolio standard, which is this year 16%, next year 18, and will continue to go up yearly in 2% increments. It makes it more, it makes it, it helps to drive them towards a point where it's economic for them to start shutting down non-renewable generating sources and building generating sources of their own.
But is that because it's local?
Well, it has to be local because they're putting the energy into the New England grid where they can't put energy in to the Texas grid and the Texas wind producers are not putting energy into the New England grid either. Yes, in theory, well, the, the US is considered to be one electricity market for the purpose of Rex. But there's a reason why there are eight or 10 different grids that are somewhat interconnected, but the New England grid largely is separate from the others, as all the others are. So we, we want, we need to generate a certain amount of electricity. It doesn't travel. We need to generate electricity, electricity locally. And so we don't, and we don't want that electricity to be generated locally with gas or coal powered plants or nuclear powered plants. We want it to be generated with renewables sources. And we're trying to push the producers towards that. They're only have to produce a minimum of 16% at the moment.
This is Lana. If I could, could I make a comment?
Yes.
I think sort of the bigger picture kind of view of this is we have X amount of money to invest in this. And if we could put our money into something that is really very directly and immediately going to build the renewable market in our region, which is where we need to build the renewable energy. Texas has plenty of room to put up wind farms, et cetera. But it strikes me that that is more sorry, I was going to use a word ethical or not ethical, but a cleaner, a truer green product. And we're really doing, when we talk about the public good, we're doing something for the public good of Carlisle, but beyond Carlisle as well. I think I'm just going to say that we don't have the luxury of time anymore. And anything that we could do, even as a small community to add to action that increases the transition to renewable as soon as possible is a real benefit and something that I think we need to consider. In a lot of communities, they are making decisions about CCA programs connected to climate action plans in their towns. We don't have that at this point. We've been waiting for a master plan which has environmental issues and ecological issues woven into it, sustainability. But at the moment, we're doing this in kind of its own separate silo. But I hope with some vision to, to contributing to a master plan that is holistic and will help us be a part of the solution. So from my point of view, whatever we could do to increase the impetus for local renewable development would be a very good thing to do. I guess cost always becomes an issue, but we're starting to get a taste for the cost of inaction on climate. And I think that there comes a time when you have to accept a reality around the cost of doing something.
Does anybody know if there is a plan for the development of renewable energy in New England? I haven't seen any other than Cape Wind.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to that, but I'm actually, you know, we're in sort of a piece of the, my company's in a piece of the renewable wind market. And I can tell you that as Brian, or maybe as Bob pointed out, this is a high cost region. So when like the Department of Energy looks at wind projects, it's preferential to the West Coast or the Gulf Coast, or you know, I mean, it's, I should say this is offshore. So I'm only in the offshore piece, but I, I guess I, I believe in it, but I gotta push back on Lina a little bit in two ways. One is that if the global, I mean, we're, we understand that environmental issues are global issues and not oh, one, four, two, one issues or oh, one, seven, four, one issues. So if the market, if we, if the result of collective action in this way were to depress the demand for wind out of Texas, where it's much more economical to build. And they therefore go brown in Texas or Arkansas, or who knows where. Have we helped ourselves really? That's number one. I'm still murky and I understand it's trading credits, but at the end of the day, it's supply and demand. And if there's enough demand for green, brown is going to go down and green's going to go up in some fashion. It may be sticky and all that, but it will go that way. The other question, which is really a selectmen question is, is, is how big brotherly do we want to be? You know, I mean, Carlisle, it's, and I'm personally an environmentalist and I believe in it, but you know, we, we tend to be in our town. It's not, if the town, we're making a decision about its own facilities and where to buy energy or whether to be lead certified or whatever, I'm all for that, you know, because town dollars should be spent in a, in a green, in a way that reflects our values. But when we start making decisions for other people on their pocketbook, we're moving towards conquered. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, that brings me to a possible compromise solution that I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to answer this question here this evening. But if we were to choose, as, as I think Bob suggested, we could come up with a guidance to the broker to go for a price point. And in that price point, then with the, the directive to the broker would be to get the largest amount of local renewal energy that you can for that price point. And that seems to me to be a reasonable compromise.
Well, and this is base, well, there's two versions of this, and I'm just want to clarify which you're pointing out. As you just described it, the balance that's not class one or required would be brown energy. The other version of what you just said is the balance would be the national wind wrecks. So those are, that's one distinction we need to make. Which, which of those two were you intending, I guess?
I would, the, we would go for the price point so that with the largest possible amount of that being renewable. That is class one, the local Rex.
That's one local.
And the remainder would be national wind or wherever. Yeah.
Or whatever, but, but that's the distinction we're debating.
Well, I think, I think you want it to be.
Yeah. I want it to be, I want it to be, I want it to be at least green. Yeah. I mean, whether, whether, whether national wind is considered green or not, at least it's wind.
Right.
Okay. It's not, it's not oil or gas.
But that's basically the recommendation that's up here. Except we put in a suggested price point and you may, you may have a different opinion about that price point. This, this particular price point simply matches the 30 month historical average of basic service.
I, I think that is a, a reasonable balance between watching the costs we're suggesting for Carlisle residents and trying to be as green as we can.
I just want to point out that if we did it that way, first of all, then the national wind wrecks are symbolic because they only, they don't change the pricing very much at all. But if we did that, we would be, it's an eccentric solution and very few, that while it, it's, while there are other towns that we are doing that, there are very few. Basically the mark, the other towns for their default option split between people who just have, have had no green content other than the RPS in, in the, in the grid power. There, the next is what we are currently doing, which was RPS plus national wind. And then finally, about a third of the towns have mass, some amount of Massachusetts class one Rex on top of the RPS power. And three or four, five, perhaps, I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me. I add to that the national wind wrecks. But by far, the majority that go into Massachusetts class one Rex, don't bother with national wind wrecks.
What do they put, what do they use in their place?
They just have RPS plus some percentage of mass class one Rex.
What's our?
Up to, up to a hundred percent.
What's RPS?
RPS is the renewable portfolio standard. It's the DPU regulation, which requires that grid power produced in Massachusetts or consumed in Massachusetts, for that matter, have at least a certain percentage of renewable power. And the percentage this year is 16% and next year it'll be 18%. So you can't buy power that is, in other words, in Massachusetts, that is not at least 16% renewable. And a fair number of the other programs just go with RPS. A fair number of them are like us, which have RPS plus national wind up to on and call themselves renewable.
What's the benefit of that?
I don't know. I think it, if you, I could only speculate why they did it. I think probably they didn't understand that the national wind wrecks are, don't provide any additionality and it's just virtue signaling.
But neither does the other one, right?
The other one, the other, the other, the best, that's class one Rex. It's debatable and some people do debate it, but it, it's much more widely considered that low mass class one Rex are provide additionality. By the way, according to Bob's sustainability report, colonial power doesn't think that. And there is a very, there is a very interesting tendency for. And there is a very, there is a very interesting tendency for Colonial Power clients to be doing what we, we are doing. But it's, it doesn't divide cleanly. There are some other non-colonial customers who do what we do, but mostly, you know, the vast majority of people who are doing what we are currently doing, that is to say, combining national wind with RPS, are Colonial customers. People who don't do that tend to be, go with other consultants. So I think it's, it's also partly just that Colonial has a point of view, and they, which is different than my point of view, and other people's point of view, and they've been successful in convincing their clients to go that way.
But I'd like to weigh in on that, if I could. I'd, I'd like to say, while I have no experience with other brokers whatsoever, I'd like to say that, even going back to the first contract, Colonial Power was very willing to do whatever Carlisle wanted, basically.
Oh.
And did not, in my opinion, did not show, if I may finish, in my opinion, did not show a bias towards one product or the other. Now, when we ask, Colonial Power definitely is willing to share opinions. I'll leave it to the board's discretion if they would like to hear Colonial Power's opinions tonight, but I, I just wanted to say, in defense of Colonial Power, I have not observed them pushing Carlisle in any particular direction, other than the one we wanted to go in.
Well, if you look at the data, you see a very strong tendency. I'm not saying that Colonial Power doesn't have any clients who are moving towards mass class 1 recs, and that other, and that other consultants never get their consultants to go with national wind. The mass CEA buying group, which is not a Colonial Power client, does the same as we do, which is combine RPS with national wind. So I'm not, it's, it's not, it's not an either-or situation, but there is a clear tendency.
But I guess I'm, I'm still kind of getting, we're getting a little wrapped around, actually, I think, is if, if globally, there's more demand for green, then green will go up and brown will go down. And there's all these local things, and there's, you know, mechanics and this and that, but would you not agree, Brian, that over the, we've used non-renewable energy for 200 or 300 years in this, you know, and we're not gonna flip it to 100% renewable in, you know, 10 years, it's gonna take 50 years or 100 years, but, and we're, but, but it is happening. So would you not agree that incrementally continuing to sort of force the sourcing globally to be renewable has to move the needle towards renewable, doesn't it?
Yes, I think so. Cambridge, right now in Massachusetts, Cambridge is the only city that has a default option, which is 100% Class 1 recs. Lowell is at, Lowell is at 60% Class 1 rec.
We can do Class 1, as long as we're not, does Class 1 by itself imply Massachusetts? It could be anywhere, right?
It's New England.
Class 1 has, is, is inherently local.
It's, to clarify, it's New England.
It's New England.
New England grid area there, and we call it Massachusetts Class 1, because it's the Massachusetts requirements, but it is sourced from New England State. So when we say local, we mean New England.
There are a few other requirements to be Class 1, that Bob mentioned at the beginning. Some biomass, for example, is not, is limited in Class 1. That's Class 2. And older, it has to be a relatively new renewable project to be Class 1 as well. Older, like hydropower, that's been online for 30 or 40 years.
It's right here on the chart. This is, it doesn't tell us the percentages, but this is the definition of Class 1 assets built in 1998 or after, and it does include landfill and anaerobic digester gas, but biomass, but I don't know.
Bob, you're, you're citing the source, but not the locality or whatever, right? The type, but not the local.
Yeah, but this, yeah, that's true, but this is primarily in New England. The ISO New England grid does include small parts of upstate New York and small parts of Canada, but it's mostly New England.
And, and Bob, to your point, all, all that power is going into the New England grid?
Yes.
But I do want to sort of come back to that point, if I could, and, and again, if, if it's true that Class 1 recs is the best investment to make for the environmental benefit, that statement is true whether you live in New England, or whether you live in Texas, or whether you live in California, or for that matter, whether you live in China. The, and that's the tricky part to get her head around, is that whether we actually use those green electrons, or whether we cause someone else to use them, the impact is the same.
Right. I agree with that.
And the reason, the reason that Massachusetts, one of the reasons, I shouldn't say the reason, we have to understand that Massachusetts has multiple objectives in setting these requirements you see in this chart. Certainly, one of them is environmental benefit, but another one is stimulating the local economy. There's no question that's an influence here. It's also, would be very difficult for policymakers and politicians to say, guess what, we're increasing your electric rates, and we're gonna take that money and send it to Texas. That wouldn't go over well. So whenever you see mandatory, mandatory requirements that a state sets, they will almost always be the most local sources that are available.
All right. I think we've kind of exhausted this part of the discussion, but I don't think we're gonna have any greater insights here. I guess I would ask that, is anybody ready to make a motion for the product?
Can I say one thing?
Who's that?
Just, just in favor of, I mean, Texas is a state that's heavily dependent on the oil industry. So in fact, there is some benefit to increasing the renewable in Texas. It might actually help reduce Texas's reliance on oil, and might make it easier to start attacking the oil industry. I just wanted to throw that out.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Is anyone ready to make a motion on the board? Okay, then I will make it, that we go with the recommended product options, which include a low-cost option, which is the same one we have currently, the 100% renewable option, which we will determine a price point with the largest percentage of Class 1 recs being part of that, and the rest being national wind. And finally, the third option, which people can choose if they're, if they would like to, is the 100% renewable option, which, which will, could be our third opportunity for people who really want to go green.
The last option is Class 1 renewable.
Class 1 renewable, yes.
Confirm the default option would be at the price point shown on the chart here?
Yes, that's, that's the 116?
Yeah.
Yes.
We had discussion yet, or we?
We haven't had a second yet.
I'll second it.
Now, somebody has to move, because, yeah.
I just, I just moved it.
Yeah, but you can, as chair.
Well, all right, I couldn't get anyone else to do it.
Yeah, no, 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 but it was good, you said it, so now I will move it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Yeah, so the, I, I, I guess I'm reluctantly agreeing with that, but I would say that what's incumbent on us, I'm back to where I started, which is communication. You know, these are very confusing issues, and I think it's important, then, that we, however we, and I don't know what the we is, whether it's the town, the selectmen, but we need to produce a pretty clear literature piece, flyer, whatever, to individuals that clarifies that while, I mean, the average person who opens that envelope up says, oh, great, 100% renewable default, it almost costs the same as the brown, I don't like brown, so I'll do that. And to Brian's point, that really doesn't help much. So I think, I think that's all we can do. We can't really force the high-cost option on individuals, but we ought to very clearly distill the arguments we've heard tonight into why it makes a difference to choose the local renewable over the, you know, global renewable. It's a complicated issue, and we don't still understand it ourselves, or at least I don't. But, you know, we've got to distill that into something that says, look, if you really want to help the local economy, and that may be, the local economy and the local production may be a more powerful argument at the end of the day than the quote-unquote renewable argument. Because, you know, we, we buy local, we support our, you know, farmers' market, and we do all that. I mean, people kind of understand that if we don't do things to support New England, then New England will be not as strong as, you know, we want it to be. We just, we have to spend some time, maybe the we is the task force, but I just don't feel like the compelling arguments are being made to people who are not already versed in the details about how this energy market works.
Other discussion? Kate? You're muted.
Kate?
Kate, will you, did you want to say something? You're muted.
Sorry, Doug was barking, so I had to, okay, sorry. I'm concerned, because we're actually giving a price increase here on the middle bar from what we currently have. I understand that we've added some mass Class 1 recs, but we haven't made it more renewable than before. And yet, and, and we did not have that last, the third one of the non-mandated portion secured through mass Class 1 recs, which is gonna be even more expensive. I'm not, in, in that educational material, I'm not sure we can explain why we're recommending, you know, not just giving people a choice of, of, you know, 1, 2, or 3, and why we've got that mixed bag in the middle.
Well, I think, I think we can explain it, and it, it will give us greater mass Class 1 recs than we have in our current offering, and that's a good thing.
And it's costing more.
And it, it may cost more, yes.
So then your choice is if you don't want to pay more for the green energy, you're gonna have to go to total brown.
Yes.
That's what worries me.
Yeah, Kate, I'm less worried about that. I'm worried about the Brian problem, which is people will say, gee, it's not much more, so, you know, I'm being green, that's great, I'll choose the middle. And then we'll go to the middle. And is the middle really, from, you know, Luna and Brian's point of view, is that a really good, a social good? My, my point is, they can certainly choose the middle, and they can choose the brown, but then we ought to educate them into why the high-cost option is even worth it.
Well, there's a lot of debate over that, and we may not be able to educate them, that a 25% increase in the cost of their electricity is going to make that kind of a result.
And maybe we shouldn't waste our time with that, and we should try to come up with...
Well, I think, I think, I think we should give them the opportunity. There, there are, there are people who feel very fervently that that's a good way to go. I think, I'm, my own feeling is the arguments aren't all that powerful, but if, I understand them, and they may be right, and I think we can give that as an option. And we, we've got a very smart town here, people can figure out what to do.
But those, yeah, okay, but we could also maybe come up with a third option that's not, you know, 25% higher, maybe it's some middle ground. I mean, if people, if people want to be real green, you know, don't drive your SUV, you know?
Well, the, but see, if you, if you do that, people, and the, the people will just say, okay, I'm opting out, I'm gonna go with national grid, or with ever-source.
All right. So should maybe, could we drop the brown option? Could we make the middle one the bottom one, and come up with a middle one that's a little bit halfway between the current middle one and the 100% local?
Well, I, I don't think that's a good idea. I think we have to give people the low-cost options, and with the understanding that very few people will choose it. The people who have real financial difficulty will probably choose it, otherwise they will not.
Can't they any way up completely out if they don't like what we present them and go to ever-source?
They can, but the low-cost option will save them money over the, over the...
Right, so we're already, I mean, Alan, we're already saving you money. You know, we have a building standard in town, right?
That's, that's where I'm at, yeah.
You have to, you have, you can't live in this town without, you know, most places 2 acres, and, you know, the septic that meets all these kind of crazy things that we've talked about, and, you know, maybe LEED cert, I don't know all the things that go into whatever, you know, approves a construction project, but we mandate stuff all the time in the, in the interest of environmental sustainability. So if the difference between 100% brown and 100%, you know, faux renewable, if Brian, maybe channel Brian here, if that's not much, then, you know, make that the low one, and let's come up with a more creative middle one. And then, yeah, you always, I agree with you, you know, you always want to give somebody the chance to go 100% local green, and think that they're doing great, and then they jump in their SUV and drive, you know, wherever, so that's fine. I'm trying to do some good here, not just put a figly fund.
I think we're doing it, we're, we are actually doing a better job than we have in our current offering.
True, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we can drop the low-cost option. You know, we had a lot of discussion about this the last time, and, you know, I, I mean, really, you know, you kind of hit the nail on the head earlier, David, I think, you know, we're moving to Concord, you know, towards Concord, and, you know, and, and I don't think we should do that, you know, it, I, I think we should offer that low-cost option. I think we should, you know, expect that there probably won't be that many people that, that opt for that, but they're also, you know, we are in the middle of a pandemic, nobody knows when it's gonna end. I don't think we've seen, you know, the, maybe the tip of the iceberg with layoffs and job cuts and salary cuts. I mean, biotech, now they're talking about cutting people's salaries because they're not working in the, you know, and, and I'm not saying that people are necessarily gonna, you know, take the low-cost option because of that, but...
Yes, I'm, I tend to agree with you.
But, yeah, no, but, but I, I do like the idea of having, you know, the, the kind of go-for-gold option, right? You know, and, and if people want to go, you know, the 100% local renewable, then why not have that as an option, and, you know?
Listen, I don't disagree.
I don't think anybody's arguing about that option.
No, I know, but, but, but also too, if you, if you want one that's more kind of middle ground, right, we can have a fourth option.
No, but, yeah, of course, I mean, right, I, let me just say, you know, if you were to plot the cost of the three options on a chart, you'd have, option A would be at one level, option B would be very slightly more expensive, and then option C would be way up there, right? So there's a discontinuity. Is there, is there a ground that says, okay, we, we recognize you're not, most people are not gonna want to see a 25% increase in their, you know, energy bill or the electricity bill? But if you're not happy with, I mean, again, it all comes down to communication, but if you're not happy with this sort of nationally, you know, renewable system, is there some amount, I don't know the number, 25% mass 1 recs, 50% mass 1 recs, is there some middle ground that can be offered? I mean, people are smart in Carlisle, I think they could pick from four options as well as three.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little confused, because it seems to me, over the last 18 months, I mean, I'm assuming the low-out-cost option is basically ever-sourced, and actually, ever-sourced was more expensive over the last 18 months, and we don't know what's gonna happen over the next 18 months. But in fact, for the last 18 months, the low-cost option was more expensive than the default option, unless I misheard what you said earlier.
No, the, the low, in the last 18 months, the low-cost option was similar sources to ever-source, but it was at a cheaper price than ever- similar sources to ever source, but it was at a cheaper price and ever source was giving it to us. Giving it to the Concord.
In the last, in the current contract, the low cost option is the same supplier as our default option, which is public power. And the price difference is $12 because it doesn't include national wind Rex. That's the low cost CCA option. If people want to go with ever source basic power, they can opt out of CCA completely.
Right, yes.
That would be and then and they would have done worse overall than either the default or the low cost option in the Carlisle CCA. But there are some quarters where they would have done better.
Right. Any further discussion? Hey, I guess we're ready for a vote. Roll call vote. Luke.
No, where's Barney? Did Barney leave?
Barney Barney has had to go to the Board of Health meeting.
Oh, oh, okay. Oscar Lilo, I.
Sorry. David?
Isn't Louis before Model?
Oh, yes, he is. Louis, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on now to duration. The recommendation was that we go with an 18 to 24 month duration rather than the full 36. Do I have a motion?
I think I can we make a different motion? I move that.
Make any motion you want. Yep.
Well, I I move because of the 36 is really so much less expensive. I don't see why we shouldn't allow her. So it takes us another, you know, few months. I think the savings of money for some people is going to be important. So I would say that we recommend a contract term of, you know, subject to review of the bids. Up to 36 months, subject. I wouldn't. I wouldn't foreclose 36 months without seeing the numbers.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, yeah, because if it is, I mean, you know, honestly, if.
I'll take that as a second loop.
Yeah, I'll second.
Now discussion.
Now the discussion. Yeah, no, I I I agree with Kate. And, yeah, if it is significantly cheaper, you know, because honestly, you know, we all know how fast things move in in town. You know, and and even if the master plan does come back with, we want to do more with this or that. Right, it's going to take time to get there. And we're there's going to be planning and we're going to need to figure things out. You know, we're going to need that time to get there. And and and, you know, and I almost feel like if if everything kind of fell at the same time, we'd end up rushing the decision. And we don't necessarily want to do them.
And as I recall, and Mark and or Denise can correct us, or maybe even Bob knows this, seems to me that if we let's say we did sign a 36, we can end it earlier with no penalty. But I don't remember exactly how that worked. For instance, this contract is coming be going to probably start before December where our other last contract ended, right?
This this contract will start at the first of the year when is when the current contract expires.
I see, we're just going out to, okay.
Yeah. Now, as I understand your motion, it's it's to seek bids for up to and including 36 months.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Oscar Lilo, I.
Louis, I.
Model, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. All right. I think we have made our decisions. Any further comments?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, David.
So when I agree that we should wait and see what the bids are. But if, for example, somebody were to opt into the 100% local renewable and the 36 month price is whatever, and that's a market that maybe is going to see some price de escalation over the next, you know, couple, three years. Is that a lock on the price on the price?
So I understand that the whatever the bids are will be for the for the whatever term we we contract for, which could be up to 36 months.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah. My understanding is that the pricing will come in next Tuesday morning, and then we'll have a conference call with Colonial and Bob. And Glenn will be on that call as well. But whether it's the chairman, yourself, if you're authorized to execute on behalf of the town or I am, a decision has to be made at that point on on the term. The whole package is not going to come back to the board for a debate and a vote. So I think it would be good to have kind of clear parameters around whatever. I presume you're going to want to be on the call next week, Alan. So you as chairman, you know, the chief executive of the of the board, the town, that you be making the call at that point as to what we were accepting. And I don't know, I I don't know if Mark is having trouble getting on the call or or Denise, maybe. Or Bob, if someone could weigh in on that point, because I think we're going to have to have a decision early afternoon. Next Tuesday.
That's correct. Pricing will come in by 11:00 AM. We'll send the pricing over to the town. Hopefully by noon, we'll set up a review call for 1:30 or 2:00. And then we we're going to need a signature by 3:30. So the supplier can set their hedge, given it's a market.
Okay, well, I certainly can be on that call and would certainly anyone else would like to be, it can be as well.
Should we? Should we amend that motion that we just did or to just empower the chair to make the decision?
You could authorize the chair to to act on behalf of the board, certainly. I just wanted to be clear.
Kate, you're a constitutional scholar here. You want to.
Well, I think we could, well, I don't think that you're saying that you think that should go in the motion?
Well, there should be a motion to that.
Oh, okay. Well, this I think we're this chart up here, this Boston decision, sorry, border selectman decision point chart. Is that what we're?
Yes.
Um, so the, by the way, I have a note from from Lana saying that the low cost option is not all brown. There is 16% local renewable mandate that does go up 2% a year inside of that. So, all right, so the well, I thought the product options that the RFP should include are listed in that chart that we already made a motion about.
I I'm not on RFP. It's more term. Okay, what did our, what did we just vote? 36 months or the best available plan?
Best available price, you know, up to and including 36 months.
So my my point is, given the real time nature of having to make the decision, we should authorize, since we've said up to 36 months, we should authorize the chair to, you know, call an audible based on what he sees. I mean, if you go back to that.
Yes.
Bob, can you go to that chart?
It's my intent. That was my intent. And I and I would say also, let's say this 36.
Not that one, the 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 length of contract, that one, yeah, that one. No, no, no.
No, go back to the other one, that one.
Yeah, that one, okay.
Not a big enough difference. Let's say, look at the 24 and the 30. Those look identical.
Honestly, it's pretty hard for me to tell even at this scale. I mean, I couldn't say I couldn't say the 36 months is that much better than the 30 months.
No, well, that I can see at this scale, 36 months is quite a bit better than either the 24 or the 30, 30, and way much, you know, and better yet than the 18. But the difference between 24 and 30 is not a big difference. So for instance, I would not go for the 30 if they're equal to the 24. I'd go for the short. I would go for the best short term.
Yes.
Let's say, okay. I think it, I think the 24, in this case, the 24 actually looks rather good. I would not necessarily go out to the 30, even though it's less expensive. It doesn't look significantly.
That was my, that was my point. I can't. I I agree with you. The 30 is, nobody would take the 30. And nobody would take the 18. But between the 12, the 24 and the 36, I don't know. But I'm happy to defer to the chair and his.
This this chart, this chart shows, excuse me, this chart shows, if I can, I'm allowed to participate at this point. This chart is pricing. Pricing isn't going to be available in the default option based on what you've decided. There are going to be two variables. The mass class one content and the length of the contract. So which of those is more important?
Well.
Which is the tiebreaker and which is the more important?
Well, those each have a cost associated with them, right?
Well, you've you fixed the price at 11 11.6 cents a kilowatt. The what you're asking.
I see what you're saying.
Sources to bid on is what the mass class one content is going to be.
Right, so we should go for the one that has the largest mass one content. Yeah.
And if there there are two bids that are tied, then how short the contract would be the tiebreaker.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
Correct. That is correct.
I may weigh in. I I just would encourage folks to be a little cautious because we haven't seen the pricing yet. May want to consider, they want to consider giving Alan discretion to use his judgment on the balance between contract length and price as opposed to being too prescriptive, despite the fact that we just suggested a shorter term. I should have caveated that with, you know, you don't want to make an absolute final call until you see the pricing. But it is good to have a sense for what that decision would be based on. So you may want to consider just, you know, giving Alan that discretion once he sees the pricing.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
In the prior motion, we just talked about terms. So now we should make a motion.
Right.
Allow the chair to algorithmically decide the optimum combination of term and.
Oh, I like that.
I second that. There are two issues here. I mean, there's also the the fact that the 100% class one may be significantly lower than one of these options. I mean, that's that's certainly the case here. It depends on what the bid. So so, you know, the middle option is more of the proportion. But on the third option, you know, so the question is, how many people want to take advantage of the third option? And how much of an advantage would they get if they have a longer term?
Yeah, that's true.
Right, so the chair, I mean, it's an excellent point. And I think that the chair can, as, you know, Justice Roberts does from time to time, he can reflect his own personal bias. If we want to, you know, induce people to go for the high cost, totally local green option, he might, that may be his tiebreaker.
Good point. I think, you know, I think as long as we hold that green bar to under the, you know, to a price and have as much the green as possible, the the low cost is always is going to be the one that floats down, right? Well, the lowest and the highest are the ones that are going to be floating.
Yep.
I think you have to.
Yeah, we'll see what kind of, we'll see what this, we'll see what the trade offs are. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion in a second, further discussion.
I second. If anybody seconded.
Okay, we'd have it.
The algorithmic.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Oscar Lilo, I.
Louis, I.
Model, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I think we're there. All righty, and I will clear the 13th, Tim.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for the.
Thank you. By the way, thank you so much to Bob and Glenn and the other members of the committee for doing a yeoman's job here. I mean, it's this was pretty complicated stuff. You made it clear even to us. And I also thank the folks from Colonial for being here tonight as well. It's it's been a good evening, and I think we made some progress. I'll accept.
I just wanted, can we check in quickly with Colonial Power to see if there's anything else they need for this bid that they did not hear tonight? We can confirm with them tomorrow, but I just want to make sure we covered bases.
Good idea.
Yeah, Bob, I think we're all set. I would just ask that if you wouldn't mind sending me over an email exactly what you're asking. I just want to confirm that I get it from the town directly and so that when I issue the RFP, we're doing exactly what you want. That would be great.
I assume, Tim, you'll you'll handle that.
Yes.
Great. Okay. And if I could just very, very quickly, these are just some other steps we can talk about later about. We have more work to do as we talked about. And we also want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in the same position next contract. There's a lot of options out there if we start ahead. Won't go into details now, but we, you know, let's learn our lessons and.
Good point. Yeah, those are all important, important things to be working on over the next 18 to 36 months. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dragon.
Roll call vote.
Oscar Lilo, I.
Louis, I.
Model, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for the folks who participated this evening. We very much appreciate the input. It was important.
Thank you very much for your very insightful questions and really thought it was an excellent meeting.
Thanks. Have a good night, everybody.
Excellent.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.